Um, the item, the Iowa Freedom Rider, um, person that is here to talk to us today. Please feel free, I welcome you now.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I think I would first like to thank you all for, um, you know, meeting with us today and convening with us. Um, in terms of, you know, discussing our demands and discussing what the movement, um, needs in terms of, you know, moving forward in this fight for social justice inequality, uh, for the black community. Uh, in terms of just an update, you know, from us, just for everyone, so we're all on the same page. Uh, the, you know, like the protesters that have been leading the, and like the organizers that have been leading, like not the not, the peaceful, nonviolent marches in Iowa City. You know, have gathered together and rallied themselves behind the name, this name of, um, the Iowa Freedom Riders. Um, this or coalition's organization that is, you know, that we have created together. And the I F R, you know, affirms, you know, the enthusiasm of protesters of the mass attendance of our rallies and protests last week. And, you know, the passion behind our protests is behind the Black Lives Matter movement. We've met with, um, the mayor Bruce Seig before to discuss our demands, um, and share our thoughts with him. Um, as you know, this, the week has, you know, as the week went by as well. Um, and you know, today we, our goal is, you know, to meet with city council members. And, you know, present our demands and request, you know, that these demands be met. And that a commitment being, a commitment be made, you know, to these demand as well. You know, as a condition of our willingness to follow, you know, leadership's directions. Um, and we also, you know, just at that, yeah, the most importantly, want to recognize that this is a growing list. And, uh, um, we, um, the more we meet with other community members and community, uh, members of our community, you know, who are also fighting for similar causes. You know, we are co-listing together to make an up, you know, to continuously update our listed demands. Um, but, um, I don't know if you want, I believe listed demands has been shared. Um, widely as well. So I don't know if you want me to go through that now, or just speak on some ideas I have of some initial, like, um, quick change that the city council can make in terms of supporting the movement right now.
Uh, because we want this to be a collaborative effort, um, but we also want to hear directly from you so that we're not creating our own um, language or interpretations of, uh, of what the list of demands are. And so we do welcome you to, uh, eh, either highlight or go through. Uh, we will be discussing this and I understand that you have another commitment, um, if I understood correctly. Um, uh, relatively soon, so we want to respect that as well.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I think so that we are, um, getting a great understanding, we would, um, we welcome you, whatever you find most helpful. Um, of course, we're sensitive to, um, really understanding that we're not going to get this r- right, um, totally while we read through this, maybe there's going to be, uh, we may have to come back and understand clearly what is being, um, stated, what is being said. And I also want to just make a point that these things, these list of demands, as I've read through them personally, these are things that are long overdue within our community. There are things that, um, when we look at the, the, the black community and what, um, has been missing, one has been the voice um, at the table. And so we welcome this opportunity to, to hear and to, um, so w- i- i- it, it really is how you want, just know that we will continue the conversation even after you leave.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I, anything that you would like to highlight, we welcome.
All right. Um, so in terms of, um, like, quick, no, I don't want to say quick, but in term, like, I don't, I can't think of a, in like emergency actions that, you know, the city council can take right now, uh, for example. Um, city parks such as other be park, you know, should be named after black lives, after black lives matter, for example. Um, another, um, demand that we have is that the Jazz Fest be made, you know, a festival that is a celebration of black culture. You know, the Jazz Festival is a festival that is, you know, a yearly thing in Iowa City and brings people from all over the state as well. And that should be, you know, jazz has roots in black culture and that needs to be, you know, the basis of that as well. And so that's also something that we, you know, the city could also work on. Um, and then, you know, one other, um, demand that we request the council to also start working on immediately is a um, reparation or restitution process, you know, a true, we want a, a commitment to creating a truth and reconciliation commission that can work, um, on these ideas for our community. And that wo- that commission be, you know, led by people of color. Um, so that that's in terms of just, you know, immediate commitments and immediate demands. Um, that are, you know, emergency, but in terms of our, like, greater list of demands, um, I'll just, you know, I have them next right now. So I'll just, you know, go through them just so that everyone has, you know, a basic idea. Um, but stop me anytime if, you know, you know, someone wants a clarification or a question or anything.
If we have those, we're posting, if we can post that as well as, as, uh, for the community to see.
Mm-hmm.
But you can go right ahead, we'll work on that.
Drop all charges against protesters, including citations, tickets, et cetera. A strong statement from the Iowa City Police Department in favor of protests, including the, the deprioritization of law and order and property damage. Instead, a pri- prioritization of police accountability for racism, while also addressing issues of systemic racism and inequality. The full publication of the Iowa City Police Department's budget and the specificity on budget funding as well. Every Iowa City department should have at least thirty percent of its staff dedicated to diversity and inclusion. Every institution and business must not only have, but also is required to implement an equity toolkit. A clear and sensible plan for affordable housing. If this is not met, those involved must have consequences. Johnson County Sheriff's and Iowa City Police Department may not enforce evictions. The Iowa City, I, Iowa City, the government of Iowa City must provide funds for programs within the Parks and Recreation Department, including programs such as the Special Populations Evolvement, S P I, also known as S P I. The curfew must be lifted in Corvo. A plan to restructure the Iowa City Police Department towards community policing must be made. Similar, similarly to what is happening in Minneapolis, Minnesota, Camden, New Jersey, and Los Angeles, California. Uh, the funds that would be, you know, from the funds that would be, you know, sent redirected will be, would be redirected from the Police Department to social service programs, such as mental health programs, um, social service program, social service, addiction and prevention programs, um, you know, all of the above. Uh, moving on from that, reforming the Iowa City Community Police Review Board so that it has a, so that it has real power, including but not limited to the ability to subpoena officers. The reformed CPRB must also have the ability to enact and enforce measurable consequences when the board recommendations are not followed or implemented. I, the Iowa City Police Department must divest from and remove military-grade equipment and withdraw any contracts from the federal government. Um, that ends my listed demands, um, that we have, you know, that we have come together as community organizers to make. Um, but also another, um, idea that just popped in my head as the thought just popped in my head that I forgot to reiterate earlier. Another, um, way that we could, the city council and the city can show its support to the Black Lives Matter movement, also, you know, to provide space, um, city and business spaces, you know, um, for us to have murals for people to come out and paint and show. Um, you know, let Iowa City show its pride for the Black Lives Matter movement. And so that's also another, I, um, you know, demand in terms of immediate emergency, um, actions that the council can take. Um, but that ends my presentation, I guess, in terms of like what our demands are and what our organization is doing.
Thank you so much. And I, 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 uh, do want to take a moment to, um, share my personal thoughts on the actions of, uh, Iowa Freedom Riders and, and, and their intent and their purpose. Their intent is to ensure that through this community, that Black Lives Matter really is, um, met with urgency. And to clearly look at the systemic racism and inequitable things that have been happening throughout our community. Now, their energy, their perseverance, we've seen it. Um, personally, I appreciate it. I think that, um, to en- ensure that that energy, um, and, and that commitment, um, by our community is there. Iowa, Iowa, Iowa Freedom Riders have put in our forefront where we cannot deny that there's a, a change that needs to happen and it needs to happen now. I've talked to Iowa Freedom Riders and I have personally told them and I have spoke out in public about any type of spray paint or any, um, like going to the, um, I eighty that I am not about that, I am not for that, that is me personally, and would like for those, uh, efforts to end. Um, but I also wanted, uh, just mention something that, and, and my phone is dead, I wanted to read an excerpt from Dr. King that talked about, and I'll have to paraphrase because my phone isn't working. Um, when you see riots or, um, and he talked about riots. Riots is the voice of the unheard, because that's where they resort, resort to, when they feel that they're unheard. Right now, counselors and all of Iowa City, we have the opportunity to stop being the, stop perpetrating the unheard and actually listen and, uh, invite all of our community to the table to ensure that all of our community is dedicated to the efforts of ending system, sys- uh, systemic racism and inequalities. It will hurt, it, people's feelings will get hurt. But we need to listen to the voices of those within our community that will share their own personal story of racism that they have had with various people or various municipalities within our community. It is hard, it will be uncomfortable, but we as a community must be dedicated to this change and I get it, I, I get it, you know, the, the spray painting. I get all this. We don't, I don't want it. But we also must look, get beyond those distractions and really focus in on the message, and that is Black Lives Matter. And that we must do extreme things in order to ensure that all voices are at the table. And we do what we know right now, and it's going to change. Uh, we're not going to get it right as a community the first time. The, the, the Iowa Freedom Riders aren't going to have all of the things and the list, as they state it, is going to continue to grow. Um, they're not going to have all the items right the first time of things that need to be discussed. But as a community, we must be dedicated, we must be dedicated to the discussion. One powerful thing that I think, um, out of all of the things that have been presented is this, um, coalition um, to be, uh, to be led within our community on, on these items. Uh, now, we're going to talk as a, as a council, but I think in order for true, um, for, for true change to totally happen, we can check some things off this checklist. Um, that's, that's absolutely, um, reachable. Um, but also I think in order for it to penetrate throughout our entire community, it needs to be a coalition, a commission-type effort. And so with that, I, I wanted to just say thanks to the Iowa Freedom Riders for being a part of today. Of course, I want to offer any more opportunity or space for you to speak, um, if you should choose to do so now, um, before council have our discussions.
Um, I would just like to just reiterate one thing. Um, I think, you know, you referred to our pro- the, the protests that have happened back, you know, this past week as, or in kind of past couple of days is riots. And I would, you know, like to reiterate that we are a peaceful movement, that, uh, we are not violent, that there have been no riots in the streets. Um, whether law enforcement has treated us as rioters and tried, cheated our movement as a riot, that is on them. Um, we have continued to be a peaceful movement and will continue to be, to be a peaceful movement until our demands are met. Um, and I would just, you know, like to make that clear for everyone.
I appreciate you pointing that out. And, um, I think what my, um, imp- point was, what my point was there to um, kind of paraphrase what Dr. King said. Um, so anything that the community don't like, or whatever the case may be, whether that's spray paint or going to the I eighty. Um, those are, those are, uh, ways, at least from my interpretation of relating it to the riots that Dr. King talked about. Those are ways for people whose voices have not been heard, uh, for them to be heard. So, um, I was not comparing them to riots, but I appreciate you, um, making that clarification because in no way was I making that comparison. Um, and hopefully I didn't, um, my intent was not to do any criticism, um, by stating, uh, uh, this as being a riot, um, by any means. So thank you for jumping in there for that clarification. All right, um, anything else? Uh, if there is nothing else, then, um, I'm going to open it up for council discussion and, um, and just, um, uh, get our thoughts because, um, certainly I know that there are, um, lots of things that we need to discuss and, yeah, I'll just open it up to our counselors. And, and maybe, um, uh, before I even do that, as I'm, uh, thinking about, um, some of the things that have been mentioned uh, from the Iowa Freedom Riders. Um, we, you know, they have the twelve demands, which will add a few things to, I, I got weather be park, festivals of black culture, uh, a commission and, um, a mir- mural space for, um, for some, um, creative art. Um, we also know that there is the eight can't wait, um, which, um, I have stated that we need to truly look through and, um, and, and, and see what we can adopt, if not all, um, some things limit, have more red tape. Um, but we can find, um, even some ways through the red tape as well. Um, and then the Obama Foundation, uh, Commitment to Action, there are some things there, some eight things there, so, um, what I, um, do believe is that that commission is going to be the most important moving forward. Um, whatever council, you know, discussed today, I think is going to be on a grandiose level. Um, because we can't, um, right now get into, um, all of those small things, eh, well, the, um, the, the, how this would all play out, although we have that sense of urgency. We have the, um, ability to create within our city efforts to look at all of those. Um, bringing, uh, already policies that are in place, looking at our affordable housing. What's there? What are the programs? What are the partnerships? Uh, what are the social justice, uh, collaborations we can have? Um, and what I, what I, you know, what strikes me right now as I'm thinking about this is, um, it is a commission-type effort. Um, and I think that could be, from my personal, uh, opinion, kind of our next, uh, an important consideration that we will want to make. So with that, I'll open it up.
This is Pauline. Um, I, I agree with you, Mayor. I think, uh, that's a good, uh, good place to start because some of those items on the list we have been doing over the last few years, with all respect to former council member Kingsley Botchway. Uh, we'll all remember that, uh, his thing was the toolkit. And he stressed that for, uh, a number of meetings, and it finally did get put into place. And over the last couple of years, several of the departments have been looking at their actions and the, uh, members, their, uh, staff, uh, as far as how it relates to, um, uh, diversity and equity. Uh, so I think we've got it, we've got a good start on that. Obviously, we need to, uh, place a stronger emphasis on that and, uh, put a little more teeth into it. Uh, but we, we have had some efforts to look at some of these things, but I think your idea about, uh, the commission, uh, would be, would be good.
Mayor, if I could jump in, um, I just want to state some things really unequivocally. I think we've all had many, many, many conversations in the last week in response, uh, particularly to the Iowa Freedom Riders and, and their direct action and their passion. And so I just want to make sure that we are very, very clear in what I believe is a community commitment being led by city council to the goals of their movement. And as you say, Mayor, to start at the end, and the end is to confront systemic racism with anti-racist policy from the city of Iowa City. And I believe we are committed to that. So I just want to be as unequivocal as possible in stating that. And I know we've been getting really just hundreds of emails and messages and phone calls relating to specific ideas. And as you said, Mayor, we can't get into the minutia right now. But I also just want to acknowledge a couple of things, again, very explicitly. That is, the, the young black leaders of the Iowa Freedom Riders, um, there are people in our community who do not agree with their tactics. But we have to acknowledge that we wouldn't be here today having this conversation with this level of urgency if they hadn't undertaken what they've done in our community to date. And I thank them for their passion and their willingness to push us because clearly we needed to be pushed in this moment. And the other thing I want to say without hesitation is that we can have the best policies in the world. And as someone who's new to this role, I've been trying to learn as much as I can about the history of what Iowa City has been doing. And we can say, oh, we're very, very progressive and we have wonderful policies in place. But if the lived experience of our community, if, for our black residents, if that's still one of oppression, then we have much, much more work to do. And so we'll highlight what we have in place and be able to show the community the policies that we have. But we will also be very, very clear going forward in our commitment and our statements because Black Lives Matter and need to be elevated right now.
I just want to say that, I'm sorry you don't see me because I feel pretty good. But, yes, Black Lives Matter. I, and I understand everything the mayor said and everyone here said. And given the fact that we received some email, a lot of email asking us to do the change. But in the couple, two days, we started seeing like maybe one, I, I personally received a few email comparing the email, the number of the emails I received that asking us to respond to the Black Lives Movement. Uh, you know, and, um, is speaking about, I guess, those emails came when the protester went and banned the stadium and the hos- the hospital. Those are statements they did not came when they banned, um, you know, the, I guess, the businesses and when they came and broke down. I'm not with those, actually, you know, like, behavior or action, no. Um, again, it's them as well. But if I'm receiving emails from people advocating for the stadium and I never receive any email from them advocating for Black Lives Matter, that's concerning. Concerning that they put the this test plan banned, you know, on the top, I'm life, like, life on the bottom. If you were sending me email and saying, hey, I like this movement, and later on you send me email and say, yeah, don't make them ban the stadium, I don't like that, I can understand that. But I'm not going to listen to the people who never come out to advocate for Black Lives Matter and just came to tell me that the stadium has been banned. No. Because Black Lives Matter. That's okay. You know, they, they broke windows on the city. Okay, they want to get out that tension. Okay, we're going to, the window is fixable. But all those lives that are gone, we cannot bring them back. I think we need to think seriously about this. We do.
I just want to thank, I guess particularly Laura for your comments. Mayor, I lost you for a bit, I'm having trouble with my audio, but Laura, I, I've commented many times as you and I have talked, um, you're a communicator, I'm an engineer, and I applaud, I, I applaud, uh, your wording, and I know your heart is absolutely there with your wording. And I would say, while my communication isn't always, um, that good, my heart is there too. And I believe, you know, we, without going, spending a lot of time, because we've got a lot to talk about. We've all seen, um, you know, the systemic racism that exists across the, that has been here for, for centuries. Um, and we certainly have not made, we've made progress, but certainly not the progress that we should have made in all this time. And, um, what has brought us here obviously is, is not just, if you will, that systemic racism, but it's one really, really big piece of it, and that is the police brutality that we see, uh, across the nation as well. And as you've said, Laura, there are a lot of things we've done, um, and a lot of things that were, that we have improved on over the years. Um, and, but that doesn't mean that we can, can sit on our laurels, we have a long way to go. And we need to get the input of the community. Um, we, I would say, because of, because of the heart of this community and because of, um, some of the people here, a lot of the people here, we don't have the same level of problems in certain regards as they do in other communities. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we don't have systemic racism, I'm, I'm not saying that. But we're, we're, we're in a lot better place than a lot of places in this commune, in this country. Um, but that, again, means we've, we still need to keep moving forward. Um, I, I think as we do that, I guess I do have one question. Um, and that is for you, Mayor, are you suggesting, I'm just trying to understand, I'm not, not deciding or judging or anything. I'm just trying to understand from what you said, are you suggesting that we set up a commission to work through these demands? Um, and the things like the eight can't wait and stuff, or did I misunderstand that?
I, I, I think, um, we have to think of urgency, so, um, because black lives do matter and we can't spend one more day trying to, you know, put in some of these systemic things on the back burner. Now, some of those, so we can certainly go through any of these and if there's something that we can, um, say, hey, we can institute that now, we can, we can, we can say that. Um, but I believe that we can't give full understanding um, of what some of these really mean without having black lives at the table at this commission to, one, share their stories, to also, um, interpret what the policy has meant within their experiences and what changes need to be made because, um, I, and it's, it, it goes beyond, I mean, we're talking policies on one level, but there are systemic things that also needs to happen within our community, where many individuals may not understand just, um, uh, how, um, how some black people within our community think about um, their neighbor who don't come over and knock on the door to bring them cookies, but they'll call the police when they're, when they hear their music. So I, I think a commission, um, or some type of a, a, um, a community-led effort would be most valuable because no matter what council, yes, we can, we can pull up the policies, um, specific to the, uh, Equity Toolkit, we can, um, you know, work with CPRB. Um, we can, uh, we, we can do a lot of these things, but I do believe that that, um, commission led by people of color um, definitely is something that we have to consider within our community. Um, and, and that commission, as I see it, is not just city, is not about the city, is about the whole community. Um, as I see it, we have our items as cities that we bring to the table. Um, that we have looked at, you know, the demands, and we have, um, identified areas from our knowledge that needs change. We can also submit the things to this commission and collaboratively work on them. So that is my thought, um, at least through this process. Um, I don't, you know, I, I, I have to admit, I don't know all the answers, and I don't know if anyone here knows all the answers. But movement, um, towards, um, getting solutions is, um, is, it has to be the dedication, which I do hear that uh, from the council, counselors, because I've talked to each of you. Um, and, and, and maybe, you know, if there's something here right now, we can kind of identify. Um, or if we, um, you know, choose to do a commission, um, then I think we can certainly involve, um, the Iowa Freedom Riders, there's the other, um, um, social justice groups throughout our community, but we definitely want to en- ensure that we have black voices at the table to talk about what are the next steps. And, um, if it's the commission, then it's the commission. Um, I, I think it's, I think it's something that we, uh, it, it's going to be a long-term commitment. Um, is, when we compare our, um, plan for climate action and the changes that need to be made there. Um, it, there's a lot of work on climate action. When you're talking about changing When you're talking about changing systemic racism, there's a lot of work that needs to be ongoing for a long time. Some opportunities that will need to happen. We just had Mayor Pro Tim and a few other leaders, which I want to name. Supervisor Roy San Porter, Counselor Rakesha Harrington from North Liberty and Pastor Smith from New Creations Church, we just had this brief events in parks where it says speak up and speak out. And community members came and we even had many black voices came and shared their experience. And I think they, it needs to be heard, it needs to be shared. It's their lived experience. And no matter if we say, i- if there's one experience where racism lies within a community, then we need to figure out and zone in on that one and figure out how we can end it throughout all of our communities. So we certainly have some challenges. It's, we see it, whether you want to acknowledge it or not, in how many black people within our community have the same type of financial abilities as others. When we look at the, how many people own homes, we know that people that are oppressed or have challenges financially, i- it's not the same as other people within our community. So we have a lot of work to do. And I think right now, what, what might be most advisable is for us to look at what is before us, what type of immediate things we can do, or do we really take on the request of the Iowa Freedom Riders? And, you know, focusing on that commission that we need to, you know, move fast on because I think is most important, that we really dig into systemic racism. And this list is a small list, that's the things that we need to deal with.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if you, if you don't mind, I'd just like to put some of this in perspective a little bit. The, at the national level, senators and members of Congress are about to introduce, beginning of next week, an act called the Justice and Policing Act. The, the truth of the matter is though, that given the leadership in the Senate, it is difficult to believe that, that any of that will make it through if they could not manage to, to pass a ban on lynchings. At the state level, the state, the state legislature has pushed through legislation that is really moving backwards, in, in my personal opinion. And therefore, that puts the burden on the shoulders of us in this municipality and in all others around Iowa to do the heavy lifting until such time as we get elected officials in place at the state and national levels who will be able to do that. You, you talked about a commission. In addition to the demands of the Freedom Riders, we have also, as has been referenced, we've received hundreds of emails. Many of them have an, a list of five different suggestions and demands that I think we could, we can also fold into that. They make reference to Campaign Zero, which reduces issues from police by 72% if everything is, if everything is adopted. And, and so I think we need to look at a broader spectrum of things. I think we also, in addition to absolutely having black and colored, leadership of color for such a commission, we also need to make sure that we include the university community and university students who are, who are an important part of our community. And I would suggest that we do look at things that we can do almost immediately. Some of them will be very real, some of them may be symbolic, but symbolism matters. I mean, on my list, on my personal list was something that the representative of the Freedom Riders mentioned, which is art space. Art is very important to this community and, and, and providing space where they can draw, paint murals or what express themselves in that way. For example, is one, it may seem relatively small and symbolic, but it's really important when you look at, for example, what Mayor Bowser has done in, in Washington DC. We could consider providing a space on a street to do something similar like that. I don't know what we're going to decide to do, but there's a wide variety of things that we can look at from specifics of how our police department polices and what law enforcement looks like to the arts.
I think, you know, I really agree with you, Janice. This is, this is great. I guess when I mentioned that, and this is doable, because, and this is kind of the immediate, immediate demand that we can look into with some others. I know there is many of them is like long time, it's not going to be overnight, but some of them is doable now. And I just want to mention that, thank you for Iowa City Downtown District Nancy Beal. She reached out to me and she said, business are in board for providing marrow. So if the city can do that as well, this is, they can start while the movement and like really hot. And so they can come and just draw like what their thought is about Black Lives Matter on those mirror right now before, while this momentum is, you know, on the top. That's what I want to say.
And, and, and I'll add on to that, when we're talking about things that we could do now in addition to collaborating efforts with murals throughout our, on city properties or business spaces, maybe talking about the arts as far as musical festivals or festival events. I think that that is a conversation that we can have right away. And again, we'll need to have black voices at the table to say what the, what these festival culture roles will look like for them. We, we, I think in the past, we know that there's, there's efforts that has been made by Summer of the Arts who host Soul Fest and some more great events such, such that was mentioned as Jazz Fest. And maybe there's a missing element that we're, that, that we're not having because we, we have these things. But if you look in the audience, is predominantly not black, even at Soul Fest. And so I, I think that those are things that, yes, we can, we can do. And maybe it, you know, when we're talking about the Weatherby Park and renaming that Black Lives Matter or, or a term that is collectively agreed upon. You know, maybe that becomes the sage area where people within our community are, and, and I understand the Weatherby Park is, 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 is a community park, it is. And, and one thing I've, I want to say is that Black Lives Matter movement does not isolate any white people or any allies from being a part of this movement. It is welcomed. We want you all to come and tell your stories as well. But also was most important is we want us all to identify where we have failed by whether it's unknown to us or there's a lot of education that needs to happen where even those people of good intentions have said the wrong thing or done the wrong thing. And, but we have to listen to black voices within our community to understand how, how they're perceiving things and, and honestly, how sometimes racism or acts of injustice is just ingrained. It, it really is. And, and until we have those conversations, and they're difficult ones as well, because you have to hear some stories that may hurt your feelings. And so I would agree, the murals, the, you know, the festival, the Weatherby Park, those are all things we can act upon, but those are all fuzzy things as well, I have to admit. You know, they're not the hard decisions that we need to make and we need to make them now. So, but yeah, we can, we can start there. And I don't know if there's any other thing that we can talk about. I do know, when I look at the eight can't wait, it talks about require use of force, you know, on a continuum. And, and, and then one thing like ban chokeholds and strangleholds, and this was relating to police, required de-escalation due to the intervened, banned shooting and moving vehicles. And I'm, I'm skipping around, you know, the list a little bit. But maybe I won't. I'm going to tell them, I'm going to, I'm going to name the eight titles. Require use of force continuum, requires exhaust all alternatives before shooting, require comprehensive reporting, ban chokeholds and strangleholds, required de-escalation, duty to intervene, banned shooting and moving vehicles, require warning before shooting. So the eight can't wait, this is definitely now talking about some of those direct things, particular to police force. And these are the things that we can, they're not the fuzzy things. These are things that we have to discuss and figure out where we want to be here. A lot of the policies that, you know, have been presented from the demands, I agree that, that is a commission work, that is long conversations. Some of this that is a part of the eight can't wait, I think we can go through these and kind of, you know, give some, give some direction to our staff as to where we want to either hold another separate meeting just related to the eight can't wait. Or we can, you know, kind of go through this list and say, we know we don't want this, we know we don't want this. Let's work on changing these now because they can't wait. And then the other thing that I'll have, that I'll mention is the Obama Foundation Commitment to Commit to Action. And there's eight things there and I'll just read those as well. Felon to require officers to de-escalate situations where possible through communication, maintaining distance, slowing things down and otherwise eliminating the need to use force. Prohibiting officers from using maneuvers that cut off oxygen or blood flow, including chokeholds or carotid restraints, which often result in unnecessary death or serious injury. Felon to require officers to intervene and stop excessive or unnecessary force used by other officers and report these incidents immediately to a supervisor. Felon to restrict officers from shooting and moving vehicles, which is regarded as a particularly dangerous and ineffective tactic. Felon, number five is felon to limit the types of force and/or weapons that can be used to respond to specific types of resistance and specific characteristics such as age, size or disability. Six, felon to require officers to exhaust all other reasonable means before resorting to deadly force. Seven, felon to require officers to give a verbal warning when possible before using serious force, such as shooting, tasing or pepper spraying any, anyone. Eight, felon to require officers to report each time they use force or threaten to use force. Example, pointing gun at a person. So I, I think that, you know, we talked about some of the things that we feel that we can do right away. From, from my vantage point, I think one thing that we can do is set up a, set up a commission immediately. We'll task a commission work to look at all of these in short term and we'll put things by categories. And maybe we need sub-commissions and ensuring that we have at the table voices that can look at these, because these are people's stories that is coming out as far as how they may have felt. No, these are people's stories coming out in ways that they have felt either discriminated against or how is being, the acts, these acts being in place are causing equities amongst a group of people which are black people. So I, I want to kind of help zone counsel in as to where do we feel that we can, are people on board with the commission? And what are people feeling next, next steps? Because I think that's most important. And we're kind of doing both of our agenda items at the same time. So what do people feel?
What I'd like to suggest is, because I, I think we need, as everybody said, there, there is a significant amount of urgency here and justifiably so. I would like to suggest that we take the eight can't wait and we take the Obama Foundation Commit to Action. And I know, hopefully things slow down in this next week so that it's possible for staff to give us kind of their response to these. From the standpoint, I am assuming that there is a number of these that are, they're already being done, that are already in our police policies and procedures. And if they're not in their policies and procedures, maybe they're in their training, but let's find out exactly where they are. Because I'll tell you as a layperson reading through these, my initial response would be, why wouldn't we approve all of these? But I also have enough experience to say, I, I've done that before and I didn't hear the other side or didn't get all the information before I said that. So before making that commitment as an individual council member or us as a full council, I think it's important that we do have input and information in response from the police department as to what they're already doing, if there are any of these that they don't agree with, why don't they agree with those? And with, with the possibility that we could act on these next week at our regular meeting, I think that gets us moving on something really quickly. I think there are some other things that we could talk about, but I think those two items in particular are urgent and I don't, and I, we're not going to get a commission set up as quickly. If we do this fairly, we're not going to get a commission set up within the next two weeks. I mean, it's going to take time. So I think we really, as a council, and we have to own all of these decisions, even using a commission, we have to do the final approval. We own these. And so while I certainly understand and appreciate and totally agree with you in terms of having black voices at the table and involved in all of this, if there are things that we feel are things they're already kind of asking for and we can make quick action on those, I think we should do it.
I agree. And, and Mr. Mayor, I would, I would encourage us to be bold in this moment. We know the community is really asking for action. And while we may not be enacting a new ordinance in this moment, because this is a work session, we can absolutely direct staff based on our, our values and what we are hearing. I think we have heard enough, not just
Are you cutting me off or you didn't hear me speaking?
I'm sorry, Ms. Alhere, I did not hear you speaking.
Yeah, I didn't hear you speaking either. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Oh, I, I was saying, I'm, I really disagree completely with Susan Memm's idea. I'm going to tell you why. First, I know that, at, at least the foundation, Obama foundations, the thing that on Obama foundation, I know that as she said, maybe the department is doing it. That's true. Maybe most of them, we, we, the police will say, hey, we're doing it. The staff will come back and say, hey, we're doing it. If we're doing it and you still, there is no change and it's still the people suffering from Iowa City policemen, police, and also they are like being treated badly even though we have those. We need to look at them. I really don't want any staff to, to involve with this. This is have to be outside commission. Where we, we appointed people of color and maybe people that white who are, you know, social, you know, social justice advocate. But giving it to the staff, excuse me, this is being there and is not even, you know, done any good. That's why I really suggest that we are not going to say, give it to the staff and let them tell us what happened, what, what in bliss, what is not. No, let another commission review why even though we have those in bliss, but is not improving the community. You know, thank you.
If I could address, since Ma specifically called me out and did If I could address, since Maz specifically called me out and disagreed with me, I'd, I'd like to. Is that?
One, one second, one second, please.
I haven't finished.
Yes, we're gonna allow.
I waited for you until you finish, uh, you know, Susan, if I disagree with you, that's fine. You know, we don't gonna be agree all the time, but.
I thought you finished, I apologize.
I, I, as a person of color, you know, I will say that we, we do not really want, we want the commission as, uh, this is commission have to be, uh, build arrogance for, like arrogance, because we are not gonna wait again. And as I told you, you know, white people in this community, there is a lot of white people in this community supporting black people and advocating for them, but no one can advocate for me, like the way that I advocate for myself. So, you, white people cannot feel us, cannot hear us, maybe they will support us, but uh, I mean, like, they cannot feel exactly, maybe they feel us, maybe they hear us, but they cannot feel exactly the way that I feel. That's why I will request this committee or commission to be from black people of color and from, you know, maybe, uh, white people who are a social justice advocate. You can talk now.
Thank you. And I apologize, I, our connections, I think, are cutting in and out, and I thought you had stopped Maz, so I did not mean to interrupt you. Um, what I was gonna comment on is, I'm not in disagreement with the commission, my, and I, but I do believe, and I'm not saying that, that we are asking staff to make any decisions, that is not at all. This is absolutely needs to be owned by the council in terms of making the final decision. My point is to find out what current policies are. If we don't know what current policies are, we don't know what new policies to put into place. I also understand that just because a policy is in place does not mean that it's being followed and that people's experiences are not good. I, I totally get that, those are two, in my mind, two totally different things. What I'm trying to get at is as quickly as possible reviewing the eight can't wait and the Obama Foundation Commitment to Action. So that we understand if there are any disagreements from staff, why we shouldn't approve any of these. Let's hear that, take that into consideration. It certainly does not mean that we, i- it's just more information. We then make the decision that we feel is in the best interest of our community. The, adding on to that from, from your comment Maz, about people still having bad experiences just because you have policies in place, I totally understand that. And one comment I would wanna make, and I, and I don't know how many members of the public are listening, but probably about five to seven years ago, and I don't remember the exact timeframe, the, the city police, Iowa City Police Department had grant money. And it was at my behest that I pushed city manager Tom Marcus against his better judgment at the time, he changed it afterwards, that we use that money for body cams. Right? We have body cams on all of our police officers because as a city council member, I push that. And that is for the protection of our community members, number one, our officers, if you care about them at all, is number two. And one of the things I would say is we need to make sure that our community members understand that, one, we have the CPRB, they can file complaints and that there is video of all of those interactions so that if our police office are behaving, officers are behaving, whether it's simply unprofessionally or racist or excessive force, that should in, always be documented on body cam. And our record of complaints doesn't show a lot of that, but it may very, very well be because complaints aren't being made. So we need to make it clear to the community, if they have an interaction that they don't think is right with our police department, please file a complaint so it can be appropriately reviewed. But I, I think we've got two different pieces here.
Um, could I respond to that?
Sure.
So I, I do. Uh, do you wanna respond, Mayor Pro Tim?
No, go ahead, Mayor, after you.
All right, yep. Um, so I agree that we need a commission um, for the, the policies and, um, you know, kinda the, the eight can't wait and the, I am free to writers, their demands. I believe we need a commission that is definitely outside of the city. Um, because it, because I believe there's so many elements that aren't just city-related. It's, it's, it's school-related, it's, it's, it's bigger than just us, but when we, but, and I would agree with, um, Susan as far as like our staff going through, now remember, this commission, um, have whatever they want to review, they have the eight can't wait, they have their items. They're gonna need policies given to them that are coming from the city, absolutely. Simultaneously, we give them the policies. We can go through and make sure if there's something missing from there. Um, that, i- you know, if we think that we can include it immediately, then we include it. I, I think at the end of the day, we can create the policies, but it's going to be, how will this actually be, um, portrayed, enacted throughout our community? Um, I, so the commission, honestly, I, I believe is the first step. And, and, uh, black people, uh, because these are their stories. These are their stories and their experiences. If you wanna look at some raw information, um, we, there's been lots of, uh, community events uh, and protests where people are telling their personal stories. Um, and it's not just about the police, it's, it's bigger than that, it's, it is, it is, well, our nation, it's been happening throughout our nation. And George Floyd had, was the one that just took it over the top where we can't ignore this anymore. And so to, I'm gonna bring it to, to, to a close on my end, but I think the commission, um, is the ones that really look at what is here and they'll be able to say, yeah, this is good. I- is there in your policy, but let me tell you my story about how this is in your policy and how this, um, and, and how this act, in my experience, went against your policy. And then I think that's where the current, the real conversations have to be had to ensure that people, one, understand that this, this was, you violated your own policy and this is what we're not gonna continue to allow to happen. Um, I was, after the, you know, the commission, um, um, a- and that needs to be developed, they need to talk about if they want, um, small groups, large groups, um, whatever the case may be. Maybe they want some elected officials, um, some policymakers that understand, um, either the red tape, um, and just so that, I think it's important to know the red tape, not to say that we're gonna just allow the red tape to be there. Um, but I do believe that the commission would be step one. Well, a, a lot of things happen simultaneously, but the commission would be definitely, um, something that I would suggest. We don't control that, but I believe that we can be committed to that. Um, and then on our end, we can start to, um, develop our policies, look at what's here, um, what's missing from our policies, and we can submit this to this commission while we're continuing to have our conversations and doing things um, that we know will, um, uh, change the, the thoughts and the minds um, or bring awareness to, um, the policies that we have and even the staff, uh, within the city or, uh, or anything that is happening within our city, um, or under our juror jurisdiction, so. I would be in favor of the commission, I think, um, you know, the things that are here about the, the murals, the we can, we, I think we can turn a, a lot of this over to the commission because it's gonna be them that come up with what type murals they want. We can, um, but we can do some work by, um, reaching out to Nancy Byrd or or tasking the, the commission and, and making, connecting the dots, um. Yeah, and I don't know if many of that, any of that, uh, totally makes sense or if I was able to articulate it properly, but I hear what you're saying, I think I hear what people are saying, and it, it, it really is, um, there is a, there is a need for the commission. There's also a need for our, for the city, which because of time restraints, we don't, we can't look at all those policies, but a preparation of the existing policies, maybe a discussion on the current policies, what can be changed based on the demands and, uh, some of the eight can't wait and some of the Obama, um, actionable things that can take place. Um, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, uh, what I was trying to say about the police review board, because I see Susan Memm said they can file a complaint and go there, I have been one of the member. The committee does not have a teeth, the committee can do anything, they don't have power, they don't have anything. And from this, I will encourage all the African-American who want to, or the, all the people of color who have complained with the police review board, is stop sending any complaint because you are wasting your time. They will look at it, and even if the police is wrong, they will just put it there, nothing happened. That's why this committee does not have any power. Even though in our last release, we said, you know, we're gonna ask the police review board to look up new policy for the police, like to review the policy of, the practice of the police. If we're going to let that happen by the current police review board without give them more pu- power, no. That's not going, I don't like that, that's why I'm encouraging another commission from our side. We just had a commission for Better Together. And we appointed a council member to go there, just to see what the impact of COVID-19, I guess, Black Lives Matter, it is impacting all those community members since, like, long time ago. So I'm in favor of commission from our side. The other thing that I wanna mention, I know that we are in the process of looking for another police gift. Do we, uh, we, I think we need to fix the job description to reflect the need to oversee new model of policing. Before, uh, I'm glad that we don't have one right now, we can have new description added to his work description. Thank you.
I, I have one question, which is, I'm, I'm having, I'm trying to conceptualize how how this commission gets formed and where, and where, where it draws its members from and then how how, how it gets it, it takes whatever items are and so forth. I mean, I think that, for example, one thing that's on my list for, that I think, city staff or perhaps legal staff can help us with is to understand exactly what state law restrictions on a commu- police community review board are to, so that we can understand what leeway we have um, with, in order to be able to increase its powers. I have also, um, heard that it is not, does not particularly have much in the way of teeth. And one of the things that I think we're gonna have to look at going forward is anything, anything that gets implemented aside from, um, the, the things like a- art or, um, or park names, there will have to be accountability. And that, and so what we can do or cannot do with, with the review board may end up being key to that. So I would like to personally understand what, I was trying to Google it earlier and did not, was not able to find what the strictures are under state of Iowa law, what we're allowed to do and what we're not.
Mr. Mayor, could I just interject to, and I apologize, maybe this is part of the uncomfortable conversation. Um, I, I feel like we're missing the moment right now. I think we need to focus on specific things that aren't in the weeds, that aren't the, well, we're not sure the extent of our authority or we're not sure how it can be implemented, but I do think there are things that are on the Iowa Freedom Riders list and also things that we know based on our values that we can try and articulate to give staff some guidance. I agree with the commission, that needs to be potentially much broader than anything we have in place right now. I think the, the, what I heard the Iowa Freedom Riders say, a truth and reconciliation commission and the, to, to your honor's point, the, the stories that need to be heard and told, yes. I think today, we can also make progress on specific items like, if we all agree that chokeholds are an inappropriate way to restrain someone by a law enforcement officer, let's say that to staff. If we don't know exactly how our policy being worded, you know, if, if, if it's allowed or not allowed, my understanding is we don't do it, great, then they can confirm that, but I think it's important that the community understand we're committed to that type of thing. And, and the Freedom Riders have their specific list, I think we can just, there, there's some things that we can knock off right now, and I'm here for that if others are willing to do that.
I'm, I'm all about it. Uh, one, one comment I was just gonna make as far as the commission, um, I think, um, Council of Wine had talked about, um, I, I guess I wanna, I wanted to be clear that we won't play that leadership role in that, the, the development of that commission. That will be coming from the community, that, that is community, that is not, that is not us. Uh, we'll, w- our commitment is to, uh, be partners in whatever fashion, um, to that commission, and so, um, I, I just wanted to make that point. But with what, um, Counselor Burgess said, then I, I think, are we ready to go through the list and see what? Maybe that will be the, the way that we do this, or maybe people can, um, just identify uh, whatever things that they're, that they've read, that they want to say, I think we can do this right now, maybe that's the way we do it. I'll start off, I think number one, although we don't have, at this point, we don't have jurisdiction over, um, if I understand correctly. Um, you know, the charges that have been, the, uh, uh, charges against protest, uh, protest. We don't have, I, I'm blanking on the, on the word now, uh, protesters, there's, uh, charges that have been done, but I think that we can, I believe that we can certainly commit to, um, advocating for um, dropping of, uh, the, the traffic tickets or citations that have been done. I personally feel we can do that. Um, and, and that's just me, and, and I don't wanna get into the weeds about the reasons of why or not. Um, I think, you know, the protesters, their message, regardless of what's happened, is that black lives matter. And, um, no matter how they need, felt, how, no matter how they express that, um, at this point, I think our community, um, wants to ensure that the message of black lives matter doesn't get distorted, and I believe that the citations that are, that are still lingering and the tickets that are lingering in itself is a distraction. Um, personally, I'm not, I wasn't for the spray painting and I wasn't for going to I-80, and I feel that those were, those distract, detracted people from focusing on black lives matter. I believe that the citations and the tickets, right or wrong, but it's a distraction, and so to bring it back to what really matters and that's black lives matter, I say, not looking at all the, the, the things around it, I suggest that we, uh, support, um, and make statements, uh, from this council to, uh, the county, um, to drop the charges against the pro- protesters. That's me personally.
So maybe we can, we can ask for, um, a, can we receive information on what those citations are and ask for the county attorney to, like, because I think there's citations and, um, and tickets that are related to protesting, that's what we're talking about, correct?
Correct, and I think, I, I, I think I, I understand what you're getting at. Um, like what is included in those, to my knowledge, I, um, and I get into the weeds about things, I, um, on those, and of course, this is public and public wants to know, well, why would you say that? Um, I, I think to my knowledge, um, or my belief is that in any of those citations or tickets or, or charges, um, whether they're, um, and particular to the ones that I'm aware of, uh, whether they're seen as, um, a, a threat, I, to my knowledge, are no longer a threat or of, of, of concern um, from my vantage point. Um, the citations that were given, I, it, it's so hard because when we think of law enforcement, we think of, you know, law and order, this is what you can do and this is what you can't do. But in order for us to get beyond, um, the distractors as a community, I think we have to, um, somehow not act as we normally do. If we, if we continue to do right now in this moment, what we normally do, then we are gonna fail. We're gonna fail at getting us to where we need to, so. Um, and that's the challenge, if, if we, you know, we, we, if we operate, um, as normal, then we're gonna miss some opportunities and, and, and right now, if we wanna capital, capitalize on black lives matter, we, and I understand there's a greater community out there that, um, you know, it, it's getting citations and getting whatever the case may be, what, but right now with these protesters, this is what they're asking. Um, I think that there's even workable things with these protesters. Uh, they're coming now and having conversations and, and trying to, and, and learning ways. They're coming now and having conversations and, and trying to, and, and learning ways to really put their, their anger and frustration and their stories into ways of resolution systemically forever. And, and that's where I, I think i- if we focus in on, you know, having those charges lingering and citations, I, I think, it, it's, it's a, it, it distracts from moving forward with all of this other stuff and, and, but that's where I am.
In, in terms of things that I'm personally am willing to commit to right now, I agree with what Counselor Burgess said about chokeholds. If we need to find out what the policy is and, and completely reaffirm it, there is no reason in my, in my view to you, to use chokeholds. I would like to find out if our, if we, if our department currently has a duty to intervene. If not, I think we ought to, we ought to have a duty to intervene. Is there a duty to report? If not, I think we have to have a duty to report. I think we need to commit to this, to discussing these items, being an agenda item basically on every, at every single one of our meetings going forward. And I would also like to find out exactly what we can do with respect to a, the community review board to strengthen its powers. I would, at some point also, we're talking about the police department and policing, but we're also talking about it without them. And I would like to see, hear from them as well. They are also members of this community. It may not be very popular to say right now, but their mission statement actually includes working in partnership with the community and enhancing trust. So I'd like to hear from some of them going forward as well as how they, how they see that can be done as well as from all the other community members who feel that their voices have not been heard up until now.
I just wanna say that I agree with Bruce of, you know, the mayor of dropping the charges. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, dropping the charge. But let us talk a little bit about that. You know, when police officer, every day they go to the protest after the protest finish and they start to stopping those people to search their car and also just give them a ticket or to the car because those people, they cover their license plate. I'm hundred percent against people covering their license plate. But let us think about the big picture. Why they were doing that? Because they don't wanna be targeting, but they, they don't want nobody to identify them. Otherwise, I'm not defending them by any means. But during this time, it's critical time. Black people are grieving and our police officer go after the protest and stop all those people and to the car. The narrative about the police in Iowa City is already bad. Instead of like making that narrative a little bit good, and if you stop those people and you search the car, nothing dangerous there. You should have give them ticket, you know, warning. Instead, you give them ticket, give them warning. Uh, you know, and after that say, if you, if I see this car again, the attack has been covered, okay, we would take it here. But just given the fact that everything happening and those, they knows that those people are protester and they know in a normal time, they never gonna do that, we should have give those people ticket. Since we did not, I will support the mayor on like dropping, drop all the charge. But not only that, the city is responsible for paying their twoing expensive because I hear that all the car had been too. And I guess the twoing company charged them money. So we should refund them that if they paid out of their pocket. That's what I really want to see. Thank you.
Uh, this is Pauline. Oh, is that, can I talk? I, we haven't had a chance to talk. Some of us had not had a chance to talk. I would like just a, a few minutes to, to say a few things. First of all, on dropping the charges, I'm reluctant to say that because what are the charges? I'd like to see a list of what they've been charged with. If they were truly things where they were breaking a law, a rule, rules are made for a reason. I, I'm not, I'm hesitant to, to drop them if, if it's just because they were out in the streets and they're trying to make a point, that's one thing. But if they were truly breaking some rules, I, I would like to see before I blanket like say, let's drop all the charges. What were the charges? Because, you know, there are other citizens out there who might be doing the same things and, and we're not gonna drop their charges. So I, I, I would like to see that. And, and in relation to that, as far as this commission and then also what we're talking about today, staff, and I'm not talking all citywide staff, but police department staff, particularly the, the union leaders, they need to be in this discussion. And it's unfortunate that this was put together pretty fast and we, we don't have, we, we don't know what their rule books say. You know, there, we can't, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, but we need to make it clear that if those are, if those guidelines are already in place, they need to be followed and we will expect that. We will hold them accountable to follow those rules. So I think those eight can't wait and the Obama rules are important for whoever to look at the commission or us as a group. And I think Susan had mentioned earlier something about in two weeks, maybe looking at those things. Maybe by that time, we could have a list of the rules that are already in place and perhaps have someone from the police union to talk to us and, and say what they're already doing. And then in relation to the police also, as far as the job description for the chief, Chief Matherley was excellent as far as a new model for a police. He, he was getting a real foothold on community policing. He stressed that. He stressed that the officers get out there, get out of their cars, talk to, talk to people and be out there in the community and, and be known, you know, as, as a friend and not a foe. And I think that's important. And whoever our next chief happens to be, I think we need to be certain that that's, that's important in their beliefs also. So that's all, that's all I, oh, and, and then as far as the murals, I mean, right now, as we speak, the South District is, is making a beautiful mural on, on a business that cooperated and let them do that. So we're doing that all over town, the, the beautiful Goose Town mural that was painted on, on the side of building. So that, that's not something that would be difficult to do, just to find the folks. And we've got artists, we've got creative people in this community, utilize them and, and come together and do that. That's something we can, we can encourage to do right now. We don't need to sit down as a council and say, you will make murals. You know, they, anybody can do that. Just, you know, work together with a business and get a group together. The South District's been working on it for two years and it's coming together very nicely and the community is helping to paint it. So that's possible. That's something we don't need to talk for hours about. Uh, and I don't know about you, but I, I was starting to get really frustrated by the whole discussion not going anywhere. But anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just wanna say that the police unions always covers the police. They defend them. And I don't think we have to make them to tell us what can we do to make this practice good. I, I'm not with your opinion on that. And also, you were, the ticket that they being get is because they covering the license plate. And those people were coming from, they were protester. And they were coming from there. Yes, I think if they searched their car to find out if there is anything dangerous there and they found out there is no, nothing dangerous there and they give them ticket and to the car, that's what we're talking about. We are not here to talk about dangerous people who are, we, we wanna defend the dangerous people, of course not. You know, but that's what I think.
Yeah. And thank you for that clarification as to why the ones that we were suggesting, and it's just that, the ones that were pulled over for covering their license plate and the vehicle was taken for that purpose. But yeah, I wanted to make sure that that clarification was given.
May not be specific, but I'd just like to tag on to what Counselor Taylor said about the, the process of hiring a new police chief. There, I'm, there will be forums, there will be discussions and everyone should make their desires and their demands known and everyone should participate in that.
Yes, I was in the hiring committee of the, of Gaudi, the, the, the previous police chief. You know, and I'm gonna tell you, I said yes for him and I said if not him, nobody. Okay. But also, after he came aboard, I, I understand things has been reduced. But a lot of bad things had happened during that time as well. Maybe you guys don't interact with people of color a lot and can tell you the experience about what they have been facing during even the previous police chief himself. When I say we need to look at the description of the police chief, we really need to. And also the hiring committee, look at the hiring committee. Most of the people on the hiring committee is white people. And few of them are black, but most of them, we need to look into that too. Because they can bring their, you know, their fear and their concern. They can advocate for that if they being part of the hiring process. But also, we needed to look at the job description.
Fair enough.
So a few things that I have so far, as far as maybe some things that we can do now, is the require comprehensive reporting, ban chokeholds and strong, and, and strangleholds, duty to intervene. And I'll read what that means, require officers to intervene and stop excess, excessive force used by other officers and report these incidents immediately to a supervisor. So those are three things that I, I, I don't know what counselors are thinking that we can definitely, for our next meeting, because we have to take votes if it's not there. Maybe we can certainly have those three things. They've been identified as things that we, I don't know, I maybe need to get some net, not enough heads if everybody is agree with those three things from the eight can't wait. And it kinda does go into the Freedom Riders demands as well. If people are, I, I'm seeing some not enough heads. So we can certainly have staff prepare, and I, I can work with staff as well to prepare that for a vote at our next council meeting. We will go ahead and look at other items, of all of these items, to see if there's something that we can't present next week, knowing that this still will go to this commission that is, that will be developed outside of council. It'll be self-developed within the community. And no matter what we do now, it is still, I think, from what I'm hearing from counselors in my discussions, whatever we do now, we're still gonna funnel through this commission just to ensure that, one, the policies and procedures are definitely some of that they, the wording is right. But their stories are gonna be important to also hear and to listen to and to be shared to make sure that we are understanding fully how we don't wanna repeat this within our, within our, within our city. So those are the three things that I, I, I charge the staff now because of the consensus of where we are. And then the, it, it, it sound like the, the, the mural and the, maybe the festival. And I didn't really get it, I, I think I got half, almost up to four people with Wetherby Park. I don't know if I can maybe get a sense of, do we have support for, for kind of the, at least the, we wanna, we wanna start the conversations with connecting the dots for the murals and for the festivals. And that's just us giving names to kind of this commission because we don't wanna, we don't, we're not interested in creating that. We believe that that needs to be created by this commission and by the community outside of council. So are we as, as a, because Wetherby Park is under our jurisdiction, are we comfortable kinda saying, let's put Wetherby Park, they asked to rename it o- o- on their agenda?
I'd like to know some history of how that place got its name. I'm not saying I'm against any kind of changes, but I think making changes without any understanding of the history could be problematic. And while I've got the floor, I'll just add, I, I'm, I guess concerned and confused about this commission. The city has never had a self-appointed commission. So I don't understand how that's gonna work and who's gonna get on it and how many peoples it's going to be. If it's gonna be fifty or hundred people, if you have fifty or hundred people raise their hand and say, hey, I wanna be a part of this. You've talked about it being broader than just Iowa City because we have community-wide, school district issues, et cetera. So are we talking about having people from North Liberty and Coralville as part of a commission who are giving us advice on what we should have for Iowa City policies? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm seeing some issues here that are, I understand we need to do some things differently, but I'm seeing some issues that I don't understand and could be problematic.
Oh, could I respond to that? I, I think it's the, is exactly similar to Better Together. Where Better Together is coming together with different municipalities and different organizations throughout the community. And then their intent, that, that's outside of city. A part of their intent or desire is for them to make recommendations to each of those, each of those municipalities to consider final adoption or final, so I think it's, it's the same as Better Together in theory. Where it's just a commission that people, a- a- and it's also no different than either the, the Friends of the Deer or, or Climate Strikers. They're gonna present to us whatever their desires are. At the end of the day, council makes the decision. And so, so I think to put it in perspective, that is my thought process is they certainly can't, they don't make the, they don't make the final decision. That's a reality. But that commission can develop, can go into detail, just like Better Together is, has developed. And I, out of a, out of a critical need of COVID-19 being expanded. And I think that this commission itself, just like we weren't involved with setting up the commission, we weren't the, the, the three different entities that came together to set up the commission. I, I think that certainly we can offer to have a seat at the table, maybe we'll be, yeah, I, I think it's really early to, you're right ahead.
Mayor, thank you. I, I think none of us know what this commission is and it doesn't exist yet. But what we have in front of us is some very specific requests relating to city policy that we do know we either have control over or we can influence through our direction or our own requests. So I would ask that we maybe try and focus on that for now with the understanding that there needs to be a broader community-led effort relating to some of these deeper and longer-term issues that are gonna take a lot of work. But I don't want us to lose sight of it, our immediate ability to continue with, with some of these, you know, more specific things. And, and I think, I'm just gonna start throwing them out there. The publication of the Iowa City Police Department budget is there. We need to elevate that, make that more accessible. We need to dedicate resources to communicating that information in a succinct and accessible way to the community. So we know the information is there, but we're committing now that we're gonna make that more available. If anybody disagrees, please jump in, but there are some things here that I'm just taking for granted and I'm gonna keep going. I think every department in the city utilizing the social justice and racial equity toolkit and having some accountability for that, that's something we believe in, that's something that we're doing. We need a report from staff on what departments have done it and where, you know, what's left and to make sure, again, that we're elevating that information and sharing it directly so that people can help hold us accountable for the equity toolkit. We don't have the power to force businesses to do that. But I was in a meeting this morning with the downtown district and, and Mayor Potem said the same thing, that the downtown district is favorable as well as the Iowa City Area Business Partnership to promoting, for example, the Better Bridges Institute, which has been offered before, which is a diversity, inclusion and equity program and pushing that and other equity toolkits for the business community. And I think we all stand behind that. A clear and sensible plan for affordable housing. I hope that we can keep our affordable housing conversation front and center, as I believe we have been doing in the recent past, and make sure that our affordable housing policy continues to promote equity and to focus on those individuals in the black community who need improved opportunities for homeownership, as the mayor has identified. And we have talked specifically- And we have talked specifically about that issue in the South District, South District Home Ownership Program. And again, to make that information more accessible and make sure the community can hold us accountable. Relating to evictions, my understanding is the Iowa City Police Department does not enforce evictions, that that would come from a court order from a judge who directs the Johnson County Sheriff's Department to execute an eviction. So I just want to make sure that we clarify that the Iowa City Police Department is not executing evictions. And if they are, let's have a conversation about what that means and what that looks like, what we can do. The Special Population Involvement Program with the Parks and Recreation Commission. I think we're all in favor of that. It's something that's been in our budget. Let's make sure that we're looking at that and continue to fund it and make sure that it's funded adequately. And for members of the community that have recommendations for specifically how that program should be expanded, let's do it. As to reforms for the Community Police Review Board, I personally would like to see that entity have the power to compel officers to testify. I don't know if we can do that, but I think that is reasonable and appropriate and a part of an investigative due process procedure that, that makes a lot of sense. It may be that that's not possible and that would require legislative changes. But I would hope that we would all agree that having an officer provide sworn testimony as to their side of a complaint as to the facts that were undertaken. I think that is important and I, I definitely, I'm asking for that. The question of divesting from military-grade equipment and contracts. I think we, a few of us have received a message from one of our county supervisors about a piece of equipment that we call the MRAP. I don't know what that acronym stands for, but it's sort of a multi-purpose armored vehicle. And I think we should look at it, do we actually need to use that equipment? Does it have any reasonable use or is it more harm than good? And my personal opinion is that our community does not need that piece of equipment and that we should find a way to dispose of it. So that's my position on those particular items and I hope that people weigh in if they disagree.
I, I agree with Counselor Burgess, the, the specifics with respect to the MRAP, which is a form of military-like tactical vehicle, is that it was, it was secured by Johnson County Emergency Management. It has been used perhaps a handful of times. It only really creates bad will and takes up space. And I would be in favor of asking emergency management to look at a way to dispose of it. And I otherwise support the, the, the series of, of statements and actions that Counselor Burgess proposed.
Yeah, I would support all those items that Laura has discussed.
By the way, Counselor Memes lost her internet. I'm back, finally.
And is Mayor Pro Tem on still? And my phone is dead if someone can.
She lives out in my neighborhood, so my electricity flickered. So if hers did too, she may have lost her internet.
Okay, so, yep, she, she'll probably have to jump back on. Yep, so, all right. So with, with
Can I, can I just ask a super quick question? I connect, I lost my connection at number six, affordable housing. Laura, could you just super quickly tell me the rest of them that you had listed? Thank you.
Yes. All right, so as to evictions, my understanding is that the Iowa City Police Department does not currently execute evictions. That the evictions are executed by the Johnson County Sheriff's Department based on orders from the magistrate court. And so if our officers do execute evictions, I would like to know that. And then we should talk about that and see what it looks like and make sure we understand what's happening there. I don't think we have authority to undermine a court order. But that's, that's what I said about evictions. The funds for the Special Populations Improvement Program with the Iowa City Parks and Rec Department. We support that program. We should fund that program. If people have specific requests for expanding that program or what it should look like, please bring those forward. Oh, and I'm sorry, I skipped over, the curfew should be lifted in Corahville. According to reporting I saw earlier, it has been. So perhaps we can take credit for that. I'm just kidding. But I, but I think that's, that's wonderful if that's the case for the community to have made that step. Reforming the Community Police Review Board, I am advocating for some process that would allow the board to compel officers to testify under oath relating to complaints. I don't know if that's possible, but I, it's, it's something that I think is important for due process and transparency. And I'm advocating for disposal of the MRAP.
So the answer is yes, Counselor, Mayor Pro Tem sadly lost her internet. I expect she'll try and get back on again.
And, and I am supportive as been identified as well. What, what I'm wrapping my head around right now is what is something immediate or and, and what is something for next meeting? And I think a lot of, there are some things for next meeting will just, which would just be to bring things back to the table for us to start further conversations on. Anything that is like immediate outside of, you know, maybe a support letter from council for the MRAP. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that is like immediate.
Mayor, I would just like to say I agree with Counselor Burgess' list. I, I do not think from my experience on the council and, and and information we've had from legal counsel previously. I don't think that under state law that we can compel officers, that the CPRB can compel officers to testify. And so I, I don't think that's possible. We can certainly ask that question. The other things I'm fine, a lot, like you said, a lot of it we're already doing or we already, you know, we're doing the affordable housing. We can make that more transparent. We're doing, we can get the bubble, the budget published, et cetera. We're already, I think, supporting SPI, but we can do that and maybe see what else people want or need. Obviously, there's some legal issues potentially on the evictions, but it doesn't sound like we're doing those. So I'm good with those. In terms, Mayor, of your comment for the next meeting. I, I still, I still am interested in having a more full discussion on the eight can't wait. And President Obama, the Obama Foundation Commitment to Action items with, if possible, some input from staff. I, I believe it's important before we make those decisions, final decisions, to have their input. I am not suggesting they make the decisions. We will make those decisions, but I think we need to make them with as much information at hand as possible. So I think those are again, potential immediate wins in terms of the Iowa Freedom Riders and people, all the people behind the Black Lives Movement who would see those. And I think we have a regular meeting next week. I don't know if staff can possibly get us information by then. But I'm interested in looking at those in more detail.
So I have had countless conversations with staff and many of you have as well. Staff will be prepared to address those next week. And so I, I'm comfortable there. So it, to kind of zone things in here, it sounds like we have some tasks for staff to bring to us. Some of the, some of the things like the full publication of the Iowa City Police Department budget. Some things maybe, and we'll work with them to figure out what can come now, what has to be later. But we'll, we'll get those updates. For the most part, I think most things can be provided. As far as number 11, the CPRB, I believe that we really need to know what the limitations are of the law. And so that'll probably be the presentation on that item next week. And then we can go from there. Other than that, sound like we, there was a consensus for number 12 to from this group for a letter to be presented. For any of that military-grade equipment or the M-PAP, might be messing up the acronyms now. I do want to go back to number one, because I don't think that there was, I mean, everything else on this list. I think we've, we've kind of got consensus on or some next steps on. Number one, what is the consensus here? I, I, one Counselor Pauline Taylor talked about, she wanted to see what the, what the ones are. And then after clarification from Mayor Pro Tem, she stated that the charges that are being requested to be dropped and those being requested for the city refund, the towing are just related to vehicles that were, that were towed because their license plate was covered and no other charge was cited. Are we, is, are we comfortable with, with that limitation?
I guess I'm questioning, and again, this is just lack of information. And so I may not be able to support this right now because I don't have enough information. Did police tow vehicles simply because people had their license plates covered?
So, yes. Yep.
Mayor, if I
Yeah, go, go right ahead.
Good evening or good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Jeff Ruin, City Manager. I think what would be best is, is that if the staff, we could provide you a full list of all of the traffic stops that we made during this period of time. And then you could see those specific violations that were written and you'd be fully informed at that time.
That sounds good to me because I'm not comfortable until I know what it is we're asked, specifically what we are asking to be dropped.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. That's, that kind of clarifies mine too, because just the blanket say drop all charges and not really knowing what all they were. I don't think is a good idea.
So there's two agreeable to that and, and two agreeable to the stated charges, but so what is the sense of council? Because I'm hearing silence.
I, I'd like to see the list of the charges.
I would as well.
Okay, so it sound like next Tuesday, we'll have the list of the charges and we'll go through that list as council. All right, anything else for today? We, we kind of integrated a little bit of both of our agenda items. What are people's thoughts at this time?
Mayor, just really quick, I'm sorry, go ahead, Pauline.
Oh, I was just going to say quickly back to number two. And you mentioned the meeting next week. If you could maybe have a draft, something of a letter to the emergency management folks. Unless you just want to send out the letter, but if you'd want to bring a draft of the letter encouraging them to dispose of that vehicle, that would be good. That's all.
I think we can, we can certainly bring it next week if, if that's what the council want. But I'm, I'm also comfortable that the language would just be very straightforward unless there is more you know, detail that people are wanting. Otherwise, I think it'd be very straightforward. Do we want to just send the letter? What are people thinking or do we?
I really don't know what you're talking about because I dropped from the phone for like maybe five minutes.
Yes, so this is Yep, so a letter to the county. What's the acronym again, so that I get it correctly?
The MRAP, I don't know what it stands for, but it's the Armored Multi-Purpose Vehicle that the county has that we have used.
It apparently stands for Mine Resistant Ambush Protected, which tells you probably everything you need to know about it.
Yep, so what we're, we're writing a letter to, for the removal of it from our community.
Okay, good.
Yep. So and I, I, well, there was just consensus to just write the letter without it being brought to council for review.
I had a couple of other specific policy things that again, I, my general sense is they wouldn't be too controversial if I could just throw those out there quickly, Mayor.
Okay.
One would be as far as the hiring of officers. And of course, that, the, the hiring of individual officers is in the discretion of the police department. But I, I think it would be easy for us to direct that we would not approve of the hiring of officers who have been, who've left other departments due to misconduct. That seems like something that we could maybe get behind.
Yes.
Can you say that again, Lola, please?
Yeah, that, that our police department would not hire police officers who have left other departments due to their misconduct.
Yes, good, yeah, that's great.
That's actually one of the things they would like to do at the state level as well as create. They're talking both at the state and national level about creating registries for those so that someone can't just slip from one department to another. That, that, that seems like it would be a very sensible undertaking.
And another request I would have, if, if staff could just provide this information is the, the level of qualifications for the officers who we hire. I, my general sense is that we maybe tend to have officers who have more qualifications than just the academy, but I would like us to evaluate the thresholds for officer qualifications to make sure that our officers are well-equipped to handle you know, their, their role in the community.
So a request of those qualifications and we can review that and, and go from there.
Thank you.
And also I really would like to add something here, also that the staff can look into it and bring it to us as a council. I would love to see our city department is diverseified. And we have more people of color being hiring there. We need our city to look like the community. We need the people when they walk in to relate to the city that they being taxed for it or they are living on it. I guess want to see, do we have a specific goal for hiring, you know, people of color to the various department of the city? Do we have that goal already said? I, I, I saw something before, but do we have a specific percentage that we would like to reach to? Or to work, you know, toward that goals? If, if, if the, you know, if the city manager or whoever can bring us, that would be great too. Because, you know, the, the, the people of color tend to be isolated. Because, you know, whenever they go, they don't relate to the place. So I, I would love to see, I know that we start hiring, you know, people of color, but I would, I would like to make it a goal of thirteen percentage that we are working toward it in two years, in one year, three years, as you council agreed to.
I think we do have, correct me if I'm wrong, some data that we can bring related to staff demographics. And we can discuss any goals related to ensuring that staff looks like the community for next, for next meeting. All right, well, thanks to everybody for being a part of the meeting today. I, I, I just want to kind of close us out in saying that Iowa City is a place that I love. Iowa City is a place where I believe, especially right now with all of the people that have been reaching out saying that black lives matter. And the awareness that they have now And the awareness that they have now, maybe not the full awareness of what it would really mean to ensure that black people feel safe and a part of the growth of, on so many levels within our community and within our nation. In order for us to get to where we really need to get, we have to have those uncomfortable conversations, which I can tell you. Even being a black man, today, this conversation is hard. It it really is. I am personally grieving after seeing George Floyd and realizing where you know, all seem to be good, you know, on on various levels within my life or within the community. Even black friends that I, you know, and very, you know, ride and die with. Realize in that moment that some of those false securities that I've been living with. Even though we're in the fight and the struggle to work towards making within the city, we have our policies of equity toolkits. We have, I think we've had a passion for affordable housing within our city, and we've had a lens for ensuring that minorities and people of color are are getting opportunities. But I think right now it has made it clear to us that the stories of people within our community and the cry, we need to do better. We need to en- ensure that it is a focal point and that we are very intentional in changing the stories within our community. And I I I hear that from our counselors. I hear the cry from the one-on-one conversations that I hear from our staff. And I'm going to take a leap and I'm going to tell everybody that I hear this from our police. Our police right now are you know, they are in a, they're they're in a, they're in a position right now where the the community is making their voices heard about their stories, about how they've been treated. And I want the police department to know that we are going to work through all of these conversations. We're going to hear them. It's going to be a challenge to hear, but in order for us to get to the next step, the stories have to be told. They have to be heard. And and I believe that once they are heard and once they are told, we can make those examinations within yourself, within policies, as to how can those stories end? And how can they end now? And so thank you to our police department for allowing city council to have discussions that you're not included right now at the table. I know that's a challenge. I know that it's hard. But what I can tell you is that if if black lives do matter, and the message of black lives mattering is that the the conversations, again, they have to be had. And once we put these things in place, there is going to be a time for you to be at the table. You will need to be at the table. And I think we are going to get there. This won't be Ameri, this will not be a jaunt at all. It's going to be something that we're going to have to go continuously in discussion. And I have to tell you that I'm not optimistic that that is going to, going to be over in a month. As far as the conversations, it it absolutely will not. It will continue. As we learn within ourselves, like, how can we readjust to make sure that we're being fair and equitable to all? And really truly understanding those stories that we heard that will grab our heart and and make us cry. You know, today, we may have one understanding, and then a a year from now, have a deeper understanding. Because Black Lives Matter, one of the purposes, one of the messages is, you don't know how I feel even if I tell you. You can't imagine, begin to imagine how I feel, even after the story has been painted, written out, drawn, depicted, you can never imagine. And so our community is dedicated to that, and I want to thank our police department for, and I've talked to some of the, some of our law enforcement. And right now, they are definitely listening, just like our community is listening and coming out as advocates. And so Iowa City, we will get through this. We will get through this as a community with everybody at the table. And thank you to all of the, to all of council that is a part of this today. And I want to, again, close with a special thank you to the Iowa Freedom Riders. Because your voice and all of the protesters within our community, your voice and your consistency to ensure that the message of Black Lives Matter is at the forefront, we really do appreciate that. We really do. And so we will continue to work as a council with the things that we can do with great urgency and a greater understanding. And we realize we will not get it right the first time and we'll have to reevaluate, but what we want is those conversations to continue. So we have full clarification, full understanding. And we have to get that direct from our black members within our community. So thank you to everybody for being here today and
May I say something, Mayor, please?
Yes, please.
I just really, really would like to thank our council member. You know, you being there, you come out, you participate, you did a lot of good things. During, you know, you come out, you talked about it, you support, I received from some council member, you know, letter, you know, the messages, ask me how I do, I'm doing and everything. Thank you. I I really want to highlight that. I want to thank you. And also, I want to encourage you. I I feel like you get this. But we need really to work hard on implementing that, you know, listen to black people. Go do your homework. If you listen to more people of color and just start asking them what's going on with you. And if they thought, yes, the mayor and I, we've been hearing like creative fight stories and very sad stories during our speak, uh, speak up, speak out event. You know, that's make me cry all the time when I guess, you know, start healing that. I'm concerning about my own children who going to be the future of this community. This is really concerning me and I I I'm really, really advocating hard. And you can see that in my voice, I'm mad. I'm I'm really, I don't like what happened in our black community. You know, this is, this, we are grieving. This is hard on us. People is, you know, people, they advocating about Black Lives Matter for a year. We are in 2020 and we're still saying Black Lives Matter. This is ridiculous. Please go out and talk to your black community and people of color community. Ask them what how, what they feel about the police practice and how can we come together and change this? I'm really optimistic. I'm hopeful of you guys do this, the same thing, and let us make the change that the people need. Let us make this city work for everyone regardless of their color. And looking forward to come one day and to thank Iowa City Police Department, but not now. Thank you.
Mayor, can I add something quick from a student perspective? First, I just wanted to say thank you for having this work session today. And for responding to the demands and and complaints and concerns of the community, especially because many of these complaints are coming from students. As you all have experienced, constituents pushing on you this week, that is what USG has been experiencing this past week. Thursday was a tough day. As one of the people who was involved in writing the statement that USG submitted to the University of Iowa, calling to cut ties with ICPD, it was a very tough day. Lots of tough conversations and we had thousands of students reaching out to us, calling for us to take action. And that is what we did. And going forward, I would ask council to just continue to really focus on particularly students of color and black students. Because they are the ones who are really leading the the protests and the movement in Iowa City. And that is what USG is committed to, helping their voices and uplift their voices. For going forward with the commission that has been talked about. I know there was confusion about that as to it being, you know, self-appointed. If council is looking for, you know, the Iowa Freedom Riders to work with USG to kind of lead and put that coalition together, that is something I will absolutely take back to, to the undergraduate student government, and we will get to work on that right away. And something that I I wanted to mention earlier, but just couldn't find a way to cut in was when talking about things to bring to the meeting next week about information from staff, one thing that as someone who helped to write that statement and trying to find information about statistics on the Iowa City Police Department, it is not very transparent as to things like demographics of arrest records and traffic stops and that kind of information to tell what kind of dispe- racial disparities there are within our own community. And so I don't know what the rules are about releasing that information to the public, about bringing that to council meetings. But that would be something that would be helpful in reviewing even more specifically where the problems in the Iowa City Police Department are from a quantitative perspective and implementing goals for the future to to erase those racial disparities. So that is one thing that I would, I would encourage to bring to the meeting next Tuesday. But yeah, I just really wanted to say that this is something that the undergraduate student government is going to absolutely be committed to on behalf of all of our students and especially our students of color and our black students. And so that is, we are, you know, looking forward to working with council. But I just wanted to to say that from a student perspective.
Respond real quickly to Ryan on one thing. Ryan, two police chiefs ago, Iowa City PD started collecting data on traffic stops and the racial disparity on those. So we have a number of years of data and we have had a report, I believe, at least annually from, and I'm going to, I'm dropping the name at the moment, but a professor at St. Ambrose and his graduate students who have been doing that. He's come and given a presentation to council and his whole report is in our council packet. I can't tell you right off the top of my head what the dates of those were, but certainly staff can get that for you. And there's, I think it's also important in to look at the data, but also to look at their analysis of the data is very important as well, not just, not just the raw numbers, but looking at their analysis of why you might see certain, certain numbers and certain trends. But we, we have for, I would say, at least five years, been collecting that traffic. Yeah, been collecting that data and then they have it compared to some baseline numbers. So that is very much available.
All right, well, thanks again to everybody. If anyone has any more further comments, please share them now. Hearing none, we will be adjourned until our next council work session, which will be next Tuesday. And I'm blanking on the date because I don't even know what today is, except I I bet you it's Tuesday. So we will see you next time at our work session and formal meeting next Tuesday.
Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye, everybody.